Good evening. We call this meeting a Fairfield County Council order. It is Monday, November 12, 2018 at 6:00 PM. First item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion? Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, the agenda is approved as presented. Invocation, Councilmember Paulie, please.
Let us pray. Lord, we pray for everyone here tonight, and that they will return home safely. We pray that decisions we make will be in the best interest of Fairfield County. We ask all of these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting, October 22, 2018. Do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, October 22, 2018, as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, those minutes are approved. No public presentations for tonight. We're down to first public comment session. Mrs. Davis?
We have five who wish to speak tonight. First, Mr. Jeff Morris, speaking on Teacher Village.
Good evening. Jeff Morris, District Two. As you know, I really don't think this Teacher Village is gonna get the result that the foundation suggests it is, but that's a separate issue. I already addressed that. What I'm concerned about is that we've got a proposal that at best works for 10% of our teachers. Ninety percent just wouldn't be available or able to participate because there aren't enough houses. I don't know how those 10% are gonna be chosen, and I would think the council, if it's being asked to support that proposal, should have some concern or at least input into how those selections are made. Furthermore, I think there's a bigger issue, and that is what this is, is a request from a private developer for a tax abatement. Tax abatements happen all the time for public purposes. The public purpose here presumably is to assist in finding teachers who will come to Fairfield County, live here, and be excellent teachers, help our schools. It would seem then to me that to the extent that these properties do not house teachers or first responders, law enforcement, then the abatement shouldn't be available. There should be a simple clause or a formula in the agreement that says, if you don't have them all filled with teachers/eligible people, then to that extent, the abatement itself is unavailable, just to that extent. Otherwise, we're giving a public benefit to a private enterprise for no return to the public. And I don't think the council even has the authority to do that, but I would urge you to be very careful about how you agree to that. Finally, there was some concern, some concern I heard expressed from council that you'd like to see a copy of the agreement and so forth. There was a lot of, "Well, we can't get it to you yet. It's gonna take some time." Certainly, it takes time to negotiate these deals, but it does not take time to complete that negotiation and have it executed prior to the council deciding whether there should be an abatement allowed in the first place. That agreement could certainly just provide that it is conditioned on an abatement being provided by the council within X number of days. So I would urge you not to be misled into thinking, "Well, as long as we give them the abatement, they'll come in with an agreement later that'll be okay." That's not a good idea. I urge you to be very cautious about this and careful because, as the foundation said, this hedge fund is trying to start a national trend. They're gonna make this agreement as strong as it possibly can be for their benefit, so they can take it and pitch it elsewhere. Be very cautious about your negotiations with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on economic development.
Good evening, council. Shirley Green, District Two, Ridgeway. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Davenport, Mr. Taylor, and Fairfield County Council for progress made towards an economic development project potentially locating in Fairfield County. Bringing jobs to our county will help to improve the quality of life for our citizens. We need to make sure that adequate transportation, training, and apprenticeship exists so that our citizens can take advantage of these work opportunities. We also need to make sure that affordable housing is available so workers may become full-time citizens and taxpayers here in our county. Thank you for taking the first step to helping Fairfield County be more economically viable.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer. Congratulations.
Let me congratulate all of you who are new to the council. I'm sure I speak for the majority of the citizens when I say, "We all wish you successful terms, and we're confident that you will fulfill your campaign promises. If you cannot, then you will not, and you will not, then you'll need to tell us why not, or come next election, someone else will fill that seat." Yesterday was Veterans Day. I'm a veteran, and I'm sure there are many others in this room and at home listening to this. The world and our society has changed from the days I served, and I must say that the respect due to the military now is what it should have always been. Sadly, when I returned, it was not with accolades, but none of us volunteered for applause or a pat on the back. You folks in the council have now joined that rank and to serve this country and your community. We applaud you for stepping up and taking on the challenge. Regardless of what may be said now or in the future, I want to thank you folks for standing up and being counted as the voice of the citizens. Districts are just places. We are the people who you now serve, and we are wishing you all the best of luck in that endeavor. No doubt, there will be times when you'll want to throw the towel in. Please remember tonight with pride and the distinction you deserve. You have been elected based on your words and good character, and you came into this world alone and no doubt will leave alone. No one told you then, nor should they tell you now, what, when, or how to do things. Our expectation is only that you keep your word and do the best as an individual. Your actions or lack of them will reflect as an indicator the quality of life in this county. Remember the three Cs: have courage, be committed, and let your character do the rest. I've traveled the world in my business career, met many wonderful people, and learned a few important lessons. A stewardess once asked me, "Do I know the five most important things in my life currently?" I replied, "Yep." She brought me a pen and a piece of paper, and I wrote them down. A few minutes later, she came back and said, "Now, put them in the order of importance." I did, and then she said, "Let's see if you really do know what's important." I smiled, and then she said, "Put down, next to each of those important things in your life, the time that you devote to them." I did, and after the bells stopped ringing in my head, I changed my life. I've offered that same question to you. Thank you all, and good luck.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Randy Sisk, speaking on animal control.
Chairman Smith, Ms. Goins, council, council-elect staff, I appreciate everything that y'all have done. You have for you an ordinance with animal control. I think all of y'all know what I just went through. With your leash, your lead, your fences, make sure that you talk to your council and to make sure that it will not come back to bite you. The lead that my dog, used to be dogs, now it is only single, they have much more room to run on the leash and the leads that they have now. They want a fence, and that would be great, but how many people can afford a fence? I can't. I can't afford around my house. Yeah, I could put a 10 by 10, but the leash that I have currently, you know, it's 30 foot by 25. That's gracious more than a 10 by 10. When you put together your ordinance, and I do, I support these group. I really do. There was a gentleman in Ridgway who beat an animal, put it in a bag, burn it. Yep. Yeah, he needs a set of matching bracelets. The ones that drag their dogs, sure, beat their dogs, yeah. Mine simply got tangled, and I ended up with a felony charge. That felony charge could be as simple as a Mister Mina that you have, but it can still put you behind the eight ball in a courtroom. The sheriff and I had a very nice, lengthy discussion the other day, and I told him I had no desire to sue the sheriff or the sheriff's department or Fairfield County Council. I think it serves more by facing one-to-one and discussing how we can make things better. Animal control rights, people want to push law enforcement to a felony charge on everything. That's gonna open Fairfield County to a lawsuit. Think of the people who run down the road at five mile an hour over and get charged with reckless driving. Same concept. Charge accordingly. Work with your legal team to make sure your ordinance is in good, you know, it fares out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on animal ordinance and executive.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgway. First on animal ordinance. Number one, I don't think you have the authority to make felonies anyway, and I think you probably know that, so that's not an issue. But number two, most laws are designed for two things: negligence and out-and-out clear intent to commit a crime. Both of them have the same results, and we can't let negligence slide under our laws as opposed to just out-and-out doing evil on purpose or no good on purpose. So remember that as you go through. Negligence has its consequences. Always had our entire lives. From the day you're born, negligence has consequences, and it should in your laws. Now, on the executive session, the first speaker about the teacher villages was right on. You should be very, very cautious before proceeding forward for several reasons. Number one, you're dealing with a lot of variables, unknown variables, and those unknown variables are with two of the most unreliable organizations we know of. That's our state government and hedge funds. You gotta watch your back with both of them, and I know all of you know that. And some things that you need to think about is protecting our brand and protecting our taxpayers and protecting our futures with these agreements. But you can't do that unless you have a concrete proposal. You can't know that you're protecting us. You can't know that you're protecting us. What happens if the state doesn't approve the funding the first time? Or what happens when the state doesn't approve the funding a couple years down the road? What happens when the highly, high-powered and well-pocketed hedge fund doesn't live up to the agreement? Do we have the wherthall to sue them? I'm sure this hedge fund, I'm looking at their available resources. They have far more resources than we do. What happens when they don't live up to the agreement as far as keeping the grounds well-maintained? What happens when they come back to us and say, "Oh, well, there was a cost overrun. We're gonna need more, county"? What happens when the hedge fund decides to jack the rent up? What happens when the hedge fund decides to sell it to somebody else who does something else entirely different with it? So protect the brand of the county, protect our taxpayers of the county, get all the details before you proceed, please. Thank you.
That concludes segment one.
Thank you. We're now down to public hearings. We have three for tonight. One is, item A, is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and Fairfield Medical Associates, PA, and other related matters. We'll open this public hearing at 6:14 PM. Mrs. Davis, did anyone sign to speak?
One speaker, Mr. Randy Bright.
I actually, I actually should get nine with these ordinances. There's three ordinances, isn't there?
But you signed up once.
Oh, I only signed once.
The clock's ticking, Mr. Bright.
The, the opportunities here arise from not having, now, not having a mic. What was that ordinance again? Yeah. What was the first one?
The first straight of the message.
Yeah. Okay, so much for shenanigans. I wanted to thank this council for doing their due diligence in addressing medical care here in the county. Not only did you preserve medical care as we know it today, you actually improved upon it. You improved upon it by ensuring we have a state-of-the-art facility, emergency facility, that's gonna be here for at least 10 years and may expand from there. You improved upon it by connecting our citizens with a state-of-the-art facility that is connected to a huge medical operation and the highest-ranked facility in the Columbia area. And you did all that, and you preserved a seamless transition with our old facility to our new facility, and you did all that. This is the real key that I think continues to get overlooked, and I should have paused more at the front because I'm gonna have too much time, but you did all that, and you're going to save the county on an annual basis $700,000 a year over what you were paying. Just as a reminder, well, where'd you get those figures? Well, you were paying a million three annually to the previous hospital for the last several years. Actually, counting loans, it was over that. Then, you're going to only be paying a net less than $600,000 a year to the new facility because you're gonna get taxes from that facility where you weren't getting taxes before. It was, in my opinion, it was brilliant. Absolutely one of the best things that's happened to the county. We get better medical care for $700,000 a year less. Who can ask for more? Well done, guys.
Thank you.
No one else sign to speak?
All right. Counsel, this time we'll take a motion to close that public hearing, 6:17 PM. Motion's been made and properly seconded to close the public hearing. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, that public hearing is closed. Public hearing B is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and Community Health Foundation of Fairfield County and other related matters. We'll open this public hearing at 6:17 PM. Mrs. Davis, did anyone sign to speak?
No one signed to speak.
All right. Counsel, this time we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to close the public hearing, 6:17 PM. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, that public hearing is closed. 6:18 PM, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and South Carolina ENT, Allergy and Sleep Medicine, PA, and other related matters.
No one sign to speak.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, 6:18, to close the public hearing. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, that public hearing is closed. We're now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Item A is first reading by title only, so there's no discussion. Ordinance number 713, this is an ordinance authorizing the execution of and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreement to an economic development prospect project located in Fairfield County. The execution and delivery of documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this ordinance and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and properly seconded that ordinance 713 be provided first reading. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, ordinance 713 is providing first reading. First reading by title only, no discussion. Ordinance number 714, this is an ordinance to amend, ordinance number 535, to establish the rules and regulations pertaining to animal control in Fairfield County and revise Chapter Four, Animals of the Code of Ordinances, Fairfield County, South Carolina. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to provide first reading to ordinance number 714. First reading, no discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, ordinance 714 has been provided with first reading. We're now down to resolution number 2018-010. This is a resolution specifying the composition of the commission of the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System, authorizing the execution and delivery of an amended and restated memorandum of understanding and other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Has been made and properly seconded that council approve resolution 2018-10. Do we have any discussion? Yes, Mr. Trout?
Chairman, an amended and restated memorandum of understanding, do we have a copy of it?
Yes, sir. If we could, I think that was provided in the packet, but Mr. Taylor, if you could explain as well. Certainly, I would be glad to. And we also have Mr. C.D. Rhodes here, who is our legal counsel on this particular issue, and I will let him address also why we're bringing this back up to council. But again, this just essentially reiterates the composition of the board of this new joint entity, and the board is composed of seven members, three of which come from county council, three of which come from the town, and one which is jointly approved between the county and the town. And each, the county's composition, it is made up of the administrator, a councilperson, and a citizen, and very similarly with the town, they have a councilperson, their administrator, and a citizen that they've appointed. Again, the seventh member is jointly appointed. And I will turn it over to C.D. Rhodes, and he can, again, comment on why we're bringing this back to council.
Sure. Jason, thank you. This is coming back up because we're creating this joint authority under a very specific set of laws that authorize its creation. One of the express requirements of the act is that the members, the initial members of the joint authority come to agreement as to the composition of the board. We addressed that in the original memorandum of understanding, but there was some crossed wires between the county and the town, and so in order to make sure that everybody is on the same page, we are essentially reaffirming the composition of the board in this resolution so that as we go forward, there's absolutely no question, and we have kind of expressly complied with all the provisions of the act.
Mr. Trout?
Have already passed their portion of?
They have not, so they are, I don't know that it's gonna be tomorrow, but it should be coming up on an agenda here pretty soon.
Let me ask you this question, Mr. Rhodes. What is different between this and the original memorandum of understanding? Because the way I read it, I did not read them side by side, but the way I read it, it just seemed to be the same thing to me.
It's very similar. So there was, there was a draft that was initially agreed upon between the town and the county, and this was back in the, about this time last year. Earlier this year, we made some changes to that that dealt with the Mitford Rural Water District, and that's where we had some crosswires with the town. We've stripped all of that out and gone back to essentially with a few changes to deal with the fact that you've already passed an initial resolution and some steps that you've taken. We've gone back to that original draft of the MOU.
But was there anything in that original draft that was expressly different than this? This seems to be to be the same intent?
No, this is going back to that same draft, but the copies that were signed included the Mitford stuff, and that was where we kind of got sideways.
So the town passed their original memorandum of understanding, then when we passed it, we added in the Mitford thing. That's where the confusion came from.
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, councilmembers?
And that is the, the understanding we had in the meeting the other day with the town?
Yes, correct.
All right. Seeing no more discussion, we'll take a vote on that resolution. Again, that's resolution number 2018-10. It's been, motion's been made properly seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
By vote of six to one, resolution number 2018-10 is approved. We're now down to board and commission minutes. We have two for tonight. We'll do these together. Disability and special needs board and hospital board. Do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the board and commission minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, those minutes are approved. No board and commission appointments for this evening, no old business, new business appointment of commission members to the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System. Mr. Taylor? Yes, again, this is on the agenda because we do need to go ahead and start forming this committee, and we do need appointments to it. Again, we do have myself and Don Woods, the way the thing is written, we are on there automatically, but we do need a recommendation of who to put on there from council, and we do need someone from the public. And then we will start the process of working with the town to come up with someone to bring back to you all that both, both groups would find acceptable. All right, and that's just for informational purposes tonight. All right, next is county administrator's report. Again, Mr. Taylor. All right, just a couple items. Usually, we have a department head come and give us a presentation. Tonight, we have one of the departments or an agency that we help fund. We have Vernon Kennedy, the Director of Behavioral Health Services, who will be here to give council a report and answer any que, or ask any questions, answer your questions council may have.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of council. Mr. Taylor, great to see you all here tonight. First of all, I want to say thank you for allowing me to come and provide this presentation to you all on our services that we offer here at Fairfield Behavioral Health Services, and certainly I appreciate the opportunity for your support as well as you've been giving it to us since we've been here over the years, and have a short presentation now provide for you. Of course, I've provided you some packets with some information in it as well. Certainly, if there's, certainly it's not all the services that we provide, but if there's anything else you need, after I finish my presentation, I'd be glad to get that to you and certainly answer any questions. So with that said, I'll go ahead and move on with the PowerPoint. Our hours of operation that we have at the office is from Monday to Thursday. Monday and Thursday, we're open from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, which allows those who certainly have jobs and are employed the opportunity to be able to come to services, particularly assessments and even individual and group sessions in the evening time as well. So we're glad to be able to have that. We've been offering that for many, many years. And then other days, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, we're open from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Our mission statement is, we're dedicated to providing quality, accessible, and affordable, and other drug intervention, treatment, and prevention education services to the residents of Fairfield County. That has been our mission since we've been here over the years. As I said, we've been here about 45 years. We can go to the next slide. Our primary goals that we have at our office, we work on these every day, particularly around our prevention activities. We work to delay the onset of youth drug use and promote healthy and safe living. That is very important because research tells us, as much as we can get our young people to delay or not use at all any type of drugs, particularly before the age of 18 or 21, then they're more likely not to become abusers or addicts or those who are addicted to any kinds of drugs. So we spend a lot of time and efforts on our prevention activities, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward. The other goals include, we improve emotional behavior and social functioning of the folks that we're working with, adolescents, anecdotes. We reduce substance use, increase sobriety, and sustained recovery that produces better outcomes, not only just for themselves, but also as an organization providing these services. And then lastly, we prevent and reduce frequency and severity of recurrence. Recurrence is another word of saying relapse. We don't use that word anymore. We try to get away from some of the old negative stigma-type words that we've used over the years, and so instead of saying relapse, we use recurrence. So that's our primary goal, is that we work each and every day to impact this community. Our standard of operation, we have been created, we were created in 1973 by, 1973 by an ordinance from the state of South Carolina to provide services throughout the counties, and as such, in 1979, the county council, just as many other councils across the state, designated our organization to be the sole authority for substance use disorder services. And so with that, we, at some point in time later on, established our 501(c)(3) status, and so we are a nonprofit organization. We operate under strict confidential guidelines. Without our policies and many of the entities that provide us funding and provide us oversight, we have to have our services confidential. And so it's very important for people to understand, and sometimes it's a hard thing to, for people to understand, particularly being in a small rural area, where we have a lot of people sometimes get, they have, they're dropped off at our center, and we can see the person bringing you in the door. But we tell people oftentimes, our services are so confidential, we can see the person bringing you in the door, but when they come back and ask for you, we can't confirm or deny that you're in here. It's just that confidential. A person has to give the authority or give us the consent to be able to give those kinds of releases of information. Other things I'd like you to know is that we are licensed, certified, and we have trained staff. They have to be to provide the services that we're providing, not just because we say so, but because our funders and our oversight entities, they require it, and particularly the entities that we use to get reimbursement for services, they also require these kinds of things as well. I'll mention that in just a few minutes. But we are one of 32 county authorities across the state. We're car accredited, which is very important. That's a certification or accreditation that is international, and that is required by our provider, our single-state authority, which is the Department of Alcohol and Other Drug Abuse Services. They are, in fact, the single-state authority for all of us across- They are, in fact, the single-state authority for all of us across the state, and they require us to have this COF accreditation, as well as being DHEC licensed. And then finally, we are a United Way Partner Agency. So, just sort of giving you an idea of kind of the entities we have to respond to, we have to meet certain responsibilities for. Our source of funding, we have a good bit of source of funding, which we are very proud of, but the majority of all of our funding, it comes from grants, federal grants, about $265,000. This is a typical budget for us on an annual basis, but most of our funding come from federal sources that still through federal grants that are funneled through the Department of Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services through the state, as well as some state funds, about 7% of that. We also get a lot of grants through what you see is about 15%, $113,000. That's a lot of grants that we also write ourselves. And then, of course, we get some support from the county, as well as some other grants that we get from local entities. And so, we're very proud of the fact that we have to diversify our funding. It's tough being a small organization and not having all of the separate people to do all these separate jobs, and so, all of the grant writing falls on my shoulder. And so, thankfully, we've been able to secure a lot of these grants over the years. Our staff qualifications, I just want to touch a little bit more about this so you can kind of understand what kind of staff we have. We are a small organization. We have about 12 full-time staff, one part-time staff, and a couple of independent contractors. But regardless, our staff, they go through a rigorous program to obtain their certifications and their training, and as I said, they're required to do so. As you can see, our prevention staff, they have bachelor's or master's level degrees. They have to go through at least 2,000 to 10,000 hours of volunteer experience before they can even qualify to get their certification. And it's no different for our treatment staff as well. They have to go through the same sort of rigorous process, and then they have to even pass a written and/or exam at the end, and then, of course, keep up with that on an annual basis. Those things are, as I said, required, and they're verified, and they're followed up on, and then monitored by all the entities that we provide, DHEC, COF, DAODs, and even other entities beyond that. Description of our services, we have, most of our services, as I said, they are evidence-based and best practice services. So, it's not just something we provide. These are programs and services that we have to provide and that we are required to make sure that they have some sort of impact on the people that we're serving. So, we appreciate being able to offer that. We conduct needs assessments, we review data, analyze data, and when we get the data, we try to use that to direct what kinds of programs we're going to implement, particularly in our schools, particularly when we're working with adolescents as well. Most of our prevention services, they are free to the public. We provide a lot of evidence-based programs, as I said, within the schools and in churches, and a lot of those programs are free to the public. However, our fees for our treatment services, we charge fees for our treatment services. However, we will not deny anybody's services for their inability to pay. That's very important. So, we often tell people, even sometimes our board members, that our services are not free. However, anybody that walks through our doors, we have to serve them by the fact that we receive federal dollars. And so, we're very proud of that, and certainly, we'll work with them as much as we can to make sure that they get their services. But everybody comes, they go through a clinical assessment. That drives everything. And based on that clinical assessment, it determines what services that they are going to need. So, in other words, they're not cookie cutter. It's based on that particular individual's needs, what they particularly, what they might have gone through, and so, we work with that. And it's not just a one-person team that's making that decision. It's a clinical staff, a clinical team that comes together and make that decision together based on the betterment for that particular client. Typically, clients stay in our services about three months. It just depends on the severity of their issue. But three months is a typical stay of when people come in and how long they stay into our program. We have a lot of different programs, and one of the programs we have, which we're very known for, is the DUI relicensing program. Anybody that loses their license because of a DUI, they are required to come through programs, and those programs are housed in our facilities across the state. And so, we also provide drug testing, which includes urine, which includes urine, hair, and saliva. We have an array of prevention services, as I said, evidence-based programs that you see within our schools, keeping it real, life skills, and you can read the rest. We provide youth, adult, and family counseling. Again, depending on what the assessment says, but those are the services that we provide, and of course, much more. Some I'll talk about toward the end. But one of them, particularly medication-assisted treatment, is a new service I'll talk about at the end. Opioid education and Narcan distribution training. As you all know, we're in an epidemic in South Carolina, and so, we provide training for those who are at risk for having an opioid overdose. And so, again, I'll talk a little bit more about that. And those are some of the programs. We often provide many other ancillary and supportive services to help people along their way, because we understand when folks come through our doors, they need more than just substance use services. And so, we have to work with many different partners, and we have to provide many other kinds of services to help them be, and produce, and help them be a whole person, first of all. Thanks. Addiction is a service. If you don't mind, let me wipe a little bit this way. It's a little warm here. So, addiction is a disease. I like to tell folks oftentimes, because, you know, far too long, people have thought that people can just stop drinking, people can just stop using drugs, people can just stop using marijuana. Addiction is a disease. That means that it's involving some brain abnormality, and it does take lots of things to kind of help them get off. It just cannot turn it off like you turn off a light switch. And so, they need different kinds of help to get that done. And so, we don't discriminate, addiction doesn't discriminate, and so, we work with anybody that comes through our doors. Part of what we do is involving awareness. We believe that it's important for people to know what kinds of services we provide. It's important for people to know that services can be provided in their own local areas. And so, we spend a lot of time, as much as we can, and certainly, funds as we're able to get them, because these are funds particularly that are not necessarily budgeted with the regular grants that we get, with the federal dollars that we receive. Sometimes, we have to really write additional grants to be able to provide these kinds of awareness activities. And this is one of them, where we were able to secure a grant to be able to put some billboards up. I think it's the first time we've ever done it for our organization. But we have three billboards out in Fairfield County, two on 321 business side, and actually, one is on I-77. Again, just bringing more awareness to people that addiction is real, addiction is a disease, but there's also help available for you. You can go through. The next one, too. Davis? So, you can kind of see some of the billboards that we've had out. Another thing we feel like is not only just bringing awareness, but as I said, prevention is very important. We continue to help people understand that alcohol still is a drug, and it does cause a lot of problems. Even though it may be legal to purchase, we are still having a lot of problems with alcohol, particularly for our young people. But even in Fairfield County, I'll talk to you a little bit about some of the stats that we have in Fairfield County. But we continue to remind people that alcohol is a drug, remind folks that tobacco still is a drug as well. You can go for it, Davis. Because these are things that are very important. And because what we find is that these particular drugs are legal, you can purchase them if you're aged 18 or 21, we're still seeing a lot of use with that. And we're seeing a lot of problems that people are coming to our office. And I'll talk to you a little bit about some of our diagnosis in a minute in terms of what we're seeing as relates to these particular drugs. But we spend a lot of time on talking to our young people and helping them to understand, to recognize these drugs, to know the impact of what it's going to do to them, and just to really just encourage them to not to use them at all. Same things with marijuana. As you all know, marijuana is, it still is a drug. And even though you may see states that are legalizing marijuana, even our own state that's going into that arena, we still continuously try to remind folks that marijuana still is illegal. It's addictive, especially to the developing brains, our young people. And every day, we're seeing many problems with that, but these are things that we have to pay attention to and remind our young people that this is something you want to stay away from. Not only marijuana, but all the other drugs that we talk about as well, heroin, hallucinogens, cocaine, prescription drugs, crystal meth, there's all kinds of things out here, and some probably going to be created in different ways that we are not aware of. People are smart these days, and they're creating things. They're saying that they're not talking to our young people, but a lot of these things are talking to our young people. But just bringing more awareness to our folks that these are drugs, and that they're very dangerous, and if you're not careful when you use, or for whatever reasons you use, we understand people have many different reasons, you could become addicted to some of these drugs, and some of them, you can come addicted so quickly that it's hard to get off of. But again, these are things that we're bringing awareness to our folks about. Prevention does work, and this is something we, you know, many people often say that, you know, you don't want to spend a whole lot of money in prevention services. But prevention very much does work within our own county, with our state, across the nation, because we understand that, as I said, if we can prevent folks from using, our young people in particular, then we have a better chance of curtailing a lot of these stats that we're seeing in our adult population. So, that's why we work so hard on that. Couple of things that we talk about in prevention, what we work very hard on, we look at our data at the end of the year, just kind of giving you a global idea of what we're looking at. But we look at trying to increase the decision-making skills for our young people. Those evidence-based programs that I talked about, they're generally about 60 minutes, eight to 10 weeks that we provide for our young people, and we do pre- and post-test to make sure that we capture that information of what they're saying. But we're looking for increases in decision-making. We're looking for increases in perceived risk toward alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. We're looking for them to decrease their favorable attitudes around ATOD or alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. And if those, we hope to find that when we begin these programs, that they are non-users, we want them to remain non-using. So, we look at that as well, as well as their 30-day use, because that's important for us to look at, too. Overall, I think estimatedly, each year, we serve about 800 students in our evidence-based programs, and then about 3,000 in other singles-type activities that we do, whether that's presentations, whether that's doing some events during the summer schools, during the summer programs through the recreation department, some of these other community projects that we have, even council and agent, we're providing things to the seniors as well. So, with that, those are the numbers that we typically have each year, and sometimes it fluctuates. It just kind of depends on how much we are able to do and certainly, who is requesting those kinds of things on a single basis. We're not just in the schools, but as I said, we work a lot in the communities. We work with businesses. We also work with churches. We're very proud of the fact that we've been working with churches. Certainly, I've been there 21 years. We've been doing work with churches across all those years. But in the last five or six years, we've done some major projects with our faith-based community, and we're very proud of that work. You may have seen some of that being highlighted, but I can tell you, in 2015, we started a project with the University of South Carolina called FAN, which is a faith activity and nutrition program. Many of our churches, probably churches, folks that are representing churches here tonight have participated in it. When we started that project, we recognized that we had 133 churches in Fairfield County. We recognized and we verified that number of churches at that particular time. Through the FAN project, which was a three-year program, we just finished it up this past September, we were able to get 54 of those churches to participate in the FAN training. And from that standpoint, we had, they adopted the FAN project, where they actually implemented healthy, eating, and active living-type projects within their churches, and they continue those kinds of things even today. That project was actually evaluated and is actually being utilized across the state now with other portions of the state, with other churches. But we're very proud of the fact that with that, we were able to reach about 3,500 folks representing those 54 churches. And not only that, that project was actually featured in the published, published in the American Journal of Preventive Medicine. So, hats off to our churches, hats off to the work that they've done. Just another point of how important prevention projects are. And as I said, many of the work that they did, they're continuing those efforts even today with gardens, with creating healthy opportunities for physical activity in their churches, as well as just promoting those kinds of messages throughout their church as well. Treatment is effective as well. And one of the things we focus a lot on is how, what kinds of programs can we provide to our treatment team, and what are the outcomes that we're having? That's a question that we often get as we move forward. So, just a little bit about our FY '18 data, just wanted to share a little bit with you. We serve, with 99% of our clients, they reported that they were satisfied with the services that we provide. Again, it's a lot of service. I can probably round them all here to you tonight, but it's just too many to name. But 99% of our clients are satisfied with those services, and we're very proud of that fact. We served about 379 persons in some way through our clinical services. We also had a total of 132 females and 247 males that we served. And then, 6% of those clients that we serve were from the military, they had some sort of military status. The age, as you can see, mostly the folks that we serve in FY '18, 60% of them were between the ages of 30 and 64. 18 to 29, we had about 26%, and so on. You can see the rest for there. That's important for us to know. We monitor those kinds of things, but again, as we're trying to provide programs, even for the clinical side, if there are things that we don't have, things that we feel like our clients need and want, we look at this kind of data to make those kinds of determinations. Top referral sources that we have for FY '18, and this is something that fluctuates from year to year. But in FY '18, most of our clients came through referrals from the probation partner and parole services, DMV 15%, DSS 15%, school 12%, and we're also proud of the fact that 10% of our clients, they see the need and they come in themselves. That's very important for us to be able to see and look at. Top five cities, Winsboro 22%, Ridgeway 15%, and so on, as you can see. And that fluctuates from time to time, too, although Winsboro, of course, with us being the county seat, being located in the county seat, most of the clients that have come to us, they do reside in Winsboro area. Discharges, we look at our discharge. We had 141 clients that were discharged last year, and out of that, that's out of the state's 32,000 clients that we had. And from that, we had 50% clients that successfully completed services compared to, as you see, the state's 46%. And most of this data is compared to the state, as you can see, the top three areas for primary and secondary diagnosis, still is alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana. Fluctuates with cocaine from year to year, but you can see what most people are coming to our doors for, and as well as what you can see across the state. Again, pay attention to the opioid clients. This is FY '18. Again, we only had about 7% of our clients. We know that that number is going to increase, not only for Fairfield, but it's also increases across the state. But for right now, that's what the numbers are. Length of stay is very important. Research says we can get clients in consistently and staying in service and complete, at least within that third, three-month period of 121 days, they have a better chance of sustaining recovery, and certainly, entering recovery, particularly if that's consistent. And so, when you look at the different categories of our services, we're very proud of the fact that even though we only had nine intervention folks in our program, 100% of them stayed in 121 days or more compared to the state's 77%. And of course, you can see the others with general outpatient services, 98% compared to 84%, and then, of course, intensive outpatient, 100% compared to 75% for the state. Prior participation, this is important as well. We're not serving the same clients over and over. We do serve some of the same clients, and that's great, because when clients need help, even after a treatment episode, we want them to be able to come to the right place for that. But we have, in FY '18, we had 61% of our clients that were actually new clients and never had any sort of treatment, which is very important for us compared to 52% from the state. 30-day employment, we also monitor that from admission to discharge to follow-up, and follow-up involves 120 days after they have been discharged from services. So, you can see, we work with our clients to also make sure that they are employed. And at discharge, we had 47% of our clients that reported that they still were employed compared to the state's 45%. And then, of course, at the follow-up, we had about 50% of those clients that were still employed. Living arrangements, this is how we look at whether or not folks are homeless or have any sort of place to stay. At discharge, we had about 4% of the people that still say that they were homeless compared to the state's 6%. But again, at the follow-up survey, we had 0%. So, that was a great thing, not people being able to find some sort of home or place to live at that point. Arrest, we look at that as well, and you can see the numbers for that. 30-day alcohol use, we continue to monitor the drug use even after they've left us, and thankfully, they're able to respond to us. And so, at discharge, we had 0% of clients reporting that they were using alcohol compared to 8% of the state, and so forth. And then, substance use, that's all other drugs, of course. Even in that, we realize, as I said, there are a lot of people that are living with substance use disorders, that have even some sort of abuse of any type of drugs, and we realize that they don't even get the help. And so, across the nation, we realize there's 20 million people that need help, or 2 million, 10% do not even get it. 10% do not even get it. That's pretty reflective of across the state as well. And so we know that the help is, people need the help, and we want to make sure that we do all these programs and awareness events and presentations like this, so that people can know that help is here, we're willing to help, and so we encourage everybody also to let folks know that. Recovery happens, and it happens for 23 million people. Davis, you can go to the next one for me. It happens every day. 23 million people are living in recovery. Many of us have people we know that are living in recovery. They've gone through many different paths to get there. Go to the next slide, because there are many different paths. We realize that everybody don't have to come to us. People can quit cold turkey, as we say. People can use a higher power to do that, or whatever method it is, it doesn't matter. We encourage people, if you need help, let's get them the help that they need, but we know that recovery does work, and it works every day for many people. One of the things that we're proud of, as I said, is the medication-assisted treatment. This is a gold standard for treating opioid use disorders. We have seen a lot of issues in our state. I think the nation kind of reports about 700 or so deaths each day in our nation from opioid overdose to opioid deaths. Medication-assisted treatment, as I said, is the gold standard. It involves not only prescribing medications that have been proven to help with opioid use disorders, but it also involves a combination of providing the substance use counseling. And far too long, you've had those two things separate, where we're working very hard and we're proud of the fact that we've been able to contract with a physician that provide that services to our clients. We've had him on staff or on contract for about the last two weeks. We have probably about four clients on that, seeing that doctor now and doing very well. We can see immediate results with them being prescribed the medication, using the medication, and coming to the sessions as well. So this is something that we're trying to incorporate into all of our facilities across the state, and you can see the hours that that physician is with us. So these things are very important to us. We not only provide medication-assisted treatment for opioid use disorders, but they're medications for alcohol use disorder, as well as tobacco use disorder. And so in fact, we're actually proud of the fact, we have two clients that are undergoing the alcohol use piece of that now, and so the help is here, and help is evolving in terms of not just providing one thing, but we're trying to provide a continuum of services that is going to be able to produce the best services. None of these things would have been possible, particularly if we're talking about medication-assisted treatment, some of the other services that we're working on that I won't share tonight, but many of these things would not have been possible with our current location or future, prior location. So we're certainly proud of the fact that we're in a new facility and thank council for your support in that. We were able to garner a lot of support from our state through grants and as well as the community. We had churches to donate, individuals to donate to that project, and we're certainly thankful for the fact that we were able to move in in August. And so thank you all, council, for what you have done in terms of the support and what we do. We could not do it alone. We cannot do it alone. We need your help as we move forward as well. But this is what I want to share with you all tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take any questions for you at this time.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Kennedy, just kind of curious, the young people that you do see, what is the abuse for them?
Most of the time, our young people, they have an issue with either alcohol, tobacco, or marijuana. Marijuana is really on the rise, but a lot of our young people also just have behavioral issues, and so we work with a lot of young people in that regard as well, particularly with the behavior issues.
And you do presentations in schools and churches?
Absolutely.
What does someone need to do to set up a presentation?
They just need to call us. We can just call us, call my Director of Treatment Services, or just call us, and we'll get them connected with someone.
Thank you for everything, you and your staff. Y'all do a great job.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Goins.
Yes, and I definitely want to say thank you. I know the great work that you're doing, and I know programs like this work because we have a family member, but want to also say, not only does it take the, you all doing your part, first it takes the person acknowledging I have a problem, then it takes the family acknowledging there's a problem and supporting that person. And when I was at the ribbon cutting, I saw where you had a lady come in, and she expressed that importance of family acknowledgement and then working through the process, and how you all not only helped the person, but you helped the family as well, and that's just awesome. So thank you so much for what you're doing.
Absolutely. Thank you, too, and I appreciate you saying that, because that's very important for folks to be in recovery, to share their story. We find quite often that a lot of people that are addicted to any kind of drugs, they have a better chance of working on or getting there, not only with the support that we're providing, but if other people who are actually sustaining recovery and living in recovery can tell their story and share their story, they have a better chance of being able to sort of listen to those persons. So that's very important. I appreciate you saying that, and thank you for coming to that event.
Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Taylor.
Just one other item. Wanted to give council an update on parks and recreation security. Our Recreation Director, Mr. Price, is not here tonight, but I did want to let council know, obviously, we've had a homicide in one of our parks recently, and then following that, we had another shooting where a gun was discharged and another person was shot. We are looking to address this. We have met with both the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department to request additional drive-bys and patrols of our parks to make sure that, you know, again, we're monitoring them and discouraging any of this kind of activity in the future. We're also looking at lighting cameras, possibly closing a road, controlled access to some of our parks. We have met with SCNG. SCNG has stepped up forward and said that they would provide poles for the lighting at no cost to us. We hope to have a cost on some of the cameras and a proposal to make to council shortly, again, so we can address this violence and stop it.
Any questions, comments, council members? All right. Mr. Anderson, do you have something?
Just also want to report to council that the bottom two courts are going to be removed, and the gazebo that's at the bottom where people can congregate, we also are going to remove that for safety purposes, and just wanted to let y'all know about that before we moved it.
That's directly behind the buildings.
Back behind the building.
Mr. Paul.
The court inside is fenced as well?
No, the court inside is fenced, will still be there, and we're going to have, if you can see from the diagram, we're going to have where we have cameras around that. But if we feel if we move the bottom court, that'll be a little more safer, so the sheriff has requested that, and that bottom gazebo where people can be down there at night, we're going to also remove that. That's an old gazebo, so it actually probably needs to be removed anyway.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Goins.
Comment, again, all that county does and all that a sheriff's department does in law enforcement, it takes the community to help change things. I saw on WLTX, it says, be the change in that area. You have parents that have children that go into that area, you never check on them. Sometimes you be the drive-by. Help law enforcement do their job. Don't just leave it in their lap. Help them do their job. Know where your children are, know who they're hanging with, and things will get better. Just be the change.
Thank you. Nothing else? Mr. Taylor, we're down to clerk of council's report. There is none, and we have second public comment.
We have one speaker for this section tonight, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on investment advice.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgeway. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Kennedy. Great presentation, most useful presentation probably in the 100-plus meetings that I've attended here. It's really just fabulous, and if you don't mind, I'd just like to add a challenge to everybody, to go on Facebook and follow their Facebook page and then share it with your friends, because as Mr. Kennedy pointed out, communication, getting the word out to community, that the wonderful work that they do, help him get that work out, that notice out to everybody. Share the posts. They've got some great posts and useful posts, just like his speech, so share their wonderful work and the wonderful opportunity they offer to those who are, have the addiction disease. Thank you. And that's not the end of my entire speech, however. I'd like to offer some investing advice, and the first investment advice I would give you as a county, I've mentioned before, but a real, we all know that a real roadblock for our county is water and sewer, definitely. Builders won't come here, businesses won't come here, individual homes won't come here. We haven't, we've decreased, we keep decreasing in population every year. So I have a little investment advice. Let's invest in water and sewer with a 1% penny tax, sales tax, if you will. Now, you can do it this way, or there, I believe there's also an option with a capital tax, capital project tax. Either way, let's start building a fund that, to raise money for our water and sewer project. We've got to do it. We've got to investigate it. I'm not a big tax guy, I think everyone realizes that, but this is the time that we need to look at this as an investment for our entire county to grow and prosper. It will raise approximately $2.2 million a year based upon our current rate of return, and that will go a long way into pushing this. And additionally, I'd urge you guys to continue to hold the state to their commitment of another $25 million that they promised for the mega site. That's huge, and leverage our delegation. We have a new member of the delegation, goes on board January. Let's leverage both of them. That should be topic one with them, is getting our deserved monies that the state promised. The other investment I would talk about is, is that in order to give the county some more operating money for blight, let's raise our hospitality tax. I think we can raise about a quarter million dollars for that. That'll encourage the, give the county the resources necessary to address some of the blight physically right now. That'll also give the county some resources to perhaps hire some more code enforcers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
All right. Well, now down to council times. Anyone have anything? Mr. Roof.
Yeah, I just want to, Mr. Kennedy, thank you, too, as well, for all you do behavioral health. I know most, I do, and most probably everybody in here has some family member, associate, friend that has had to deal with that sometime in their life, so thank you for all you've done. And I also want to thank all the veterans. I know there are probably more than Mr. Schaefer here tonight that are veterans and just want to thank you for all your service, and it's missed so many times, and just thank you very much for that. Also, I want to congratulate Moses Bell and Clarence Gilbert on their election to council, and also Michael Trapp and Dougie Pauli for reelection. I know y'all will do a good job and continue to move this county forward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roof. Anyone else? Ms. Goins.
Yes, I, too, want to say thank you to all the veterans for your service, for your commitment, for your care for all of us, that we can do the things that we do without that we couldn't do it. I also want to say congratulations to all newly-elected officials and re-elected officials, and looking forward to working with you. Mr. Taylor said something about the recreation and kind of touched on that, but to Scanner and to Lee Michael and Joe Shiver's Security Company, they making donations to help with this project, to help make the park area safer, and I want to say thank you to them. It is important when people come in voluntarily, are you doing something? They could just make money, but they're saying, no, we're going to invest in you to help make you better, and I definitely want to say thank you to them. Also, to Dr. Ramis, I don't see him tonight, but had a meeting with him on last, on the 30th of last month at the Northeast Campus, and that was a very good meeting. He talked about the Promise Program, which is a very rich program that we cannot afford not to invest in for our young people, middle-aged people, whoever want to be educated, there's a workable way into that. And I'm going to hold our chair, he said, if you want to do it, I can figure out how to get the monies. We're going to talk about how to get the monies for that. Okay, but I want to thank him so much for that. Also, I attended the ribbon cutting on that Thursday on the Northeast Campus, and there's a company called Right Dose Corporation, and they have settled on Midland Tech Campus in their multipurpose park, and it was just a great fit, but that just shows exactly when we're talking about industrial parks and bringing in industries, they purchased that property many years ago, but it is now just coming to fruition. But they had to prep that property, and they had it ready, so when Right Dose is ready to come in, they sought them out and ready to come in, water, sewer, everything necessary was in place, so they were able to do it within a year's time. That's what we want to do here in Fairfield County. Some people say, well, we're spending tax money, we just buying property, blah, 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 but if you don't do your due diligence upfront, when the opportunity comes, you're going to be passed over. And it was just an awesome merger, just an awesome opportunity, and I expect that they will be at some point spilling over into Fairfield County with an extension. I also want to say, kind of, I learned something in the class, went to class, and learned a word in there, it's called, and some people may know it, NIMBY. NIMBY, not in my backyard. And that's the most of the time how people feel when you're trying to do things, it's kind of like the new administrative building. We want to do things, we don't have anything and I want something, but not in my backyard. Sometimes it has to be in my backyard. Sometimes it has to do that in order to make things better, for things to grow. And I also learned on my own another word, envy, that's, it can be in my backyard. It's okay. If it's a good thing, it's a good project, if it's going to help somebody else, then we get to the mindset, you can put it in my backyard. It's okay, because I'm flexible, and that is a good thing for all of us. Teacher housing, kind of touched on that. I'm going to support it 100%, but yes, we do need to get all the kinks out, get all the details together, bring everything, everybody come to the table. This is just my thought, everybody come to the table, what is needful, what is needed, everything in the open, nothing hidden, nothing covered, and let's get together and do this project. But it has to be, like you say, we have to take caution, just like we did with the new administrative building, we had to back up a little bit and go back and redo some things, and the same thing with any project. That's the way we need to do. When we start moving forward, don't just rush into it, back up a little bit, see what you have, make sure everything, all your i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and then let's move forward, because we're getting ready for the next project. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Goins. Anyone else? Mr. Paul.
I would like to take a moment to say thank you to everyone, especially my constituents of District 5, for the outstanding support during my campaign and also over the last two years while I have served on county council. Even though at times, certain decisions have not always been easy to make, I always try to put the best interest of our county first in all that I do. I am truly thankful for everyone who voted last Tuesday and also who have believed in me during my time on council. I look forward to the next four years and hope we can continue to make a positive impact for our county. Congratulations to Clarence Gilbert, congratulations to Moses Bell, congratulations to Michael Trapp. Councilman Roof, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you best in the future. Also, last Thursday, I had the pleasure of serving Meals on Wheels for Council on Aging. They are in desperate need of volunteers, so if you have an hour out of your day to deliver meals to people, they would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Goins.
Please, one thing I definitely need to touch on that concerns District 4. Someone said that districts are just lines, but the Water Authority, the change in need, as we said tonight, for water and sewer in Fairfield County, it's desperate. It's not something we can put on the back burner, we can wait till later, whatever. And in Western Fairfield, it is imperative that we get water in that area and sewer. And when, I don't know, the mindset or whatever, this is not personal with me. Some years ago, when the water company was started and we had other management, I was nominated to be on the board then, but I respectfully declined because I wasn't in that, I wasn't in position to do that. But then we had problems. The problems are continuance. If we can do this project countywide and get better quality of water, better water service, we could have, get, be in position to get grants when we're together, get grants that can improve our water lines, they're in the ground, the lines are old, they keep breaking, keep busting, we get muddy water, it's just doing better. Let's say, be the change. So we have to be the change, and it's time for, it's past time for that change. It's not about who is in charge, but getting people in place that understand the needs of the county. Western Fairfield has been left out of a lot of situations, not because we had to, but because the way things were worked. We don't need that. When businesses want to come in, they, there should be a process that is easy for them to come in, go into the office, fill out the necessary contracts, do the process, and get connected to the system. They shouldn't have to jump through hoops, but we need the water supply there for them. And once we do this, come together, Water Authority is just persons being in place to make decisions. It's just that simple. It's nothing ironic, it's nothing outrageous, it's just persons being in place, making decisions. And as we go through, get all the kinks out of it, nobody's going to lose Jenkinsville Water Company, they're not going to take the building up, haul it off, tear it down, or whatever. We're going to make it all workable, but it just takes time. It's just life-changing for the better, and I'm going to push for this as hard as possible, not just for those that were for here, but the generation to come. We want people to come into the community. We've got to do the same thing we do with the mega site, make space and opportunity to... site. Make space and opportunity for them through water and sewer. Got to happen. Okay?
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say congratulations to the candidates for winning and to the outgoing candidate, Mr. Roof, it's been a pleasure these last two years. Roof, I'm sorry. I followed your lead, didn't I? I just want to say, it's, it's been a pleasure working with you these last two years. You know, even my family has grown attached to you, especially my little boy. But I know one of your pet things you wanted to take care of was the monument. And, and I'll, I'll definitely continue in your honor. And if we can't get it moved, Mr. Chair, if, I would like to propose we get some names up from predominant African-Americans in the, in the, from this county, because we do have a lot, and maybe do something in, in their honor. If, if that's something we can, we can work out before you leave, that'd be great. Get these names and, and go through some type of nomination process. But it's been a pleasure, Mr. Roof. And again, congratulations to all the candidates. You'll see what the other side of the fence looks like now.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you. This time, we'll take a motion to go into executive session following three matters. Legal matter update on litigation against Scanner SEG in reference to the abandoned VC Summer New Nuclear Project Item B, proposed contractual matter discussion regarding potential contractual arrangement and association with the request for special source revenue credit in Fairfield County School District Education Foundation on behalf of Gorlick Brothers Capital. Item C, economic development update discussion regarding economic development project located in Fairfield County, execution of documents in relation thereof. Motion's been made and properly seconded. Those in favor, those opposed, we're in our executive session. Thank you.